Okay, so we're ready to go?
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I call the April 21st Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have an adoption of the agenda? Motion made by Mr. Weaver, do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien, all in favor say aye. Opposed, chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Mr. Dahl, County Administrator, report, sir.
Yep, just have a few updates to report. Most of you have heard this already, but just a little reminder. So first of all, happiest of birthdays coming up, well, today for Mr. O'Brien and then coming up for Mr. Weaver as well. So happy birthday, you get to spend your day on the board meetings.
They're both turning 57.
And sixteen, they're making it.
That's true.
And in addition, it's Happy Administrative Professionals Day, so thank you for my professionals for keeping me straight on what I do every day. So just a quick reminder again, like I said, we talked about this the last couple of weeks. But again, the Rabies Clinic this Saturday, April 24th from nine to 12 at the Fluvana County High School. The Fluvana County Sheriff's Office and FSPCA is putting this on. You must pre-register ahead of time, so if you're interested, do it soon, I'm imagining.
And trash.
Yep, and then trash as well, this Saturday, April 24th as well. We have the tire drop off and hazardous waste collection from 10 to two. Tire drop off is at 10 to 12, hazardous waste 10 to 2:00 p.m. Go to Pleasant Grove Park, once you get there, individuals will direct you accordingly based upon if you have tire drop offs or tire drop offs plus hazardous waste. Again, next week, April 29th, Dominion Energy, as we talked about before, has filed a rezoning application for an adjacent parcel to their Brimo Power Station. The rezoning and companion special use permit is to build a line landfill to deposit residual coal ash from the plant. Again, this is federally and state mandated and regulated process. So Dominion Energy, along with some county staff, will be available at the Fluvana Community Center in Fork Union, April 29th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And for more information about this project, you can go to dominionenergy.com/brimoccr. And then also this week is National Crime Victim Rights Week, April 18th to the 24th. Every year, millions of Americans are affected by crime. And again, this is National Crime Victims Week, a time to commemorate the progress achieved, raise awareness of victims and stand with families, neighbors and friends and colleagues who have been affected. And if you're a victim of a crime in Fluvana County, please call the Victim Witness Assistance Program at 591-1985 to learn about the right services available for you. Also coming up in May, May 2nd through the May 8th, as we kind of put a spotlight on business, we're trying to spotlight all Fluvana businesses, small businesses, Small Business Week 2021, again, is May 2nd through the 8th. Postcards are going to all listed businesses on the buyfromfluvana.org. And from fluvana.org/sbw will have resources for residents and businesses alike. And below, we're going to have some yard signs out saying Happy Small Business Week and some postcards going out as well. So please, you know, that week, in general, support our local businesses, but especially that week, support our small businesses. And then again, just some upcoming board meetings. So next week, we have a TBD to be determined board meeting date. In case the board doesn't adopt the budget tonight, I think after we go through the budget process tonight, we'll determine if we need to have that meeting or not. But then besides that, we have May 5th at 4:00 p.m., you have a regular meeting. And then Wednesday, May 19th at 7:00 p.m., you have your regular board meeting and we're back to the kind of the regular schedule kind of moving forward. And I would be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Are there any questions? I hope you noticed I did remember to cut the microphone. Alrighty, thank you very much, sir. Hearing no questions, I will now open the first round of public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board, please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Also, please state your name and address, is there anyone wish to speak to the board at this time?
Yes, Mr. Sheridan, I'm Overton McGee, 924 Courthouse Road, Palmyra. I know that there will be more opportunities to discuss this, but as I understand it, the capital improvements budget includes a new office building. And as I understand it, one option is that the county would actually stop using the office building on the court green and sell it. And obviously, this is not a very good time to be trying to sell office space. Vacancy rates in office buildings have been high for 15 years now. There are often nice, modern office buildings in the west end of Richmond that have been empty for five years. So there's a shortage of demand for office space. And I also have a concern that if you sell that office building on the court green, the county loses control of that, you know, important historic court green. Obviously Reverend Walker Timberlake gave that land to the county for the purposes of a courthouse and associated buildings, not for it to be sold to private businesses. So I hope that the county will consider this and, you know, build as much office space as you need, but not so much that it causes you to abandon the court green. And of course, if you do need to put all your offices in one place or a large number of your offices in one place and you need to stop using that building, perhaps you could keep the ownership and provide that space for local nonprofit organizations. So I think they would be happy on the court green and it would be good for the village of Palmyra to have them there. I'm particularly concerned because when the county sold Columbia School, the county got a terrible price for that and it's now a dog training facility, which does not seem like the best use of a nice building. So I'm just not sure there's a lot of demand right now. So thank you for listening, I know there'll be more opportunities to comment on this as you plan your new office spaces. And thank you guys for doing the hard jobs. And Mr. Weaver and Mr. O'Brien, thank you so much for spending your birthdays doing that hard job.
I will note, it's also Overton's birthday today.
I was gonna say, I already sent him a Facebook message. Thank you. Forty-six? He didn't hear me. All right, thank you, Mr. McGee, is anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Still older than Mike.
Mr. Sheridan, I did see Hayden Parish raised his hand to speak.
Mr. Parish?
Yes, hello, how are you all? My name is Hayden Parish, I live at 429 Main Street in Palmyra. I hope you're all doing well tonight. I sent each of you an email yesterday and I just thought I'd stop into public comment and reiterate and read my email that I sent, just in case you didn't have a chance to get to it yet. And I am here today regarding Resolution Number 19-2020, also known as the Resolution and Statement Following the Deaths of George Floyd and Richard Brooks, which you all unanimously passed on June 19th, 2020. I should say first, thank you all so much for taking the steps of passing that resolution and affirming our county's values of combating racism and other forms of systemic oppression. But I hope today you will consider amending your resolution. As I'm sure you remember, there's a lengthy discussion amongst the board about whether to use the word death or murder in reference to Mr. Floyd. And the board opted to use the word death with the logic that Mr. Chauvin had not yet been tried and found guilty for his actions and therefore it could not be considered murder. As you may have heard, as of yesterday, Mr. Floyd was officially and legally found to have been murdered by Mr. Chauvin. And I believe based on the logic that was presented by the board and some members passionate opposition of claiming it a murder before it was proven in a court of law, it is critical to now change the word death to murder to maintain the same thread of logic used last summer when the resolution was passed. The power of resolutions, though often seen to be limited, rests in the well intentions and strategically chosen words and phrases. With this in mind, I hope that you also see the significance of changing this one word to murder, a word that was previously strategically avoided, so that your resolution can be that much more powerful and reflective of the spirit with which you passed it. I urge you to please consider taking the simple yet powerful step of amending Resolution Number 19-2020 to reflect the truth of the situation that former Officer Derek Chauvin murdered George Floyd. And thank you all so much for your time, I appreciate you listening to me. And I hope you have a good day and happy birthday.
Thanks, sir, is there anyone else wish to speak at this time? Do we see anyone, Ms. Harris? Anyone in attendance? Alright, seeing none, I will now close this first round of public comment. We'll now open up public hearings. First one up is A, SUP 20, hole 03, Stephen L. and Cody C. Peters, Mr. Miles, Community Development Director.
And we're gonna have Mr. Miles up here for a little bit, going for the long haul for public hearings.
Better get you a glass of bottle of water there, Mr. Miles.
Yeah, I got my stuff here, yes, sir.
Alrighty, sir, go ahead.
Yes, good evening Chairman Sheridan, members of the board. And this is the first of four public hearings. Request of Stephen L. and Cody C. Peters. This is the Colonial Circle property that's located at the New Roundabout at 53 Lake Monticello Road. Well, sorry. This is the general location for members of the public, the red star located at Colonial Circle there in the northern part of the county. So this is a closer shot, if you remember, this is the property that was rezoned by the same applicant back in June of 2019. And this request is the first of hopefully many requests that we're gonna have that will come before you for the construction and development of Colonial Circle. This is a little closer shot, it's the lower part of the area at the Roundabout is the proposed area for the new convenience retail food market, gas sales and car wash. So I'll go through a little bit of the comprehensive plan elements of it. And we also have for you tonight, the applicant's representatives from SHIMP Engineering that would like to present their portion of it a little more in detail. I'll go over basically some of the planning aspects and recommended conditions. So basically, when evaluating a special use permit, the two main tenants that we look at is is the proposed use not going to change the character and establish pattern or area of the community? And our analysis, the proposed car wash and gas sales will only further enhance the surrounding area to start becoming the first phase of the Colonial Circle Residential Plan Community Development. As there is a definite need for gasoline sales with the added opportunity to have a very modern automated car wash for our residents and those that travel throughout the county here as well. Second, that the proposed use for a special use permit would not adversely affect the area or the value of the neighboring property. And the proposed car wash and gas sales would be a companion type uses to the 4,500 square foot retail food market that's proposed. Generally, in our analysis, Fluvana County and also their analysis and looking at constructing this does not have enough retail convenience food sales, gas sales and really any automated modern car wash other than the one that is currently at the Exxon and Turkisag. So we believe that these uses will allow for new opportunities. And we also recommend it to the applicant that the electric vehicle charging stations could be considered, whether they do wiring harnesses or they actually install them themselves, because that is the wave of the future for our traveling public. You'll notice ones of the Zion Crossroads Sheets and some of the other modern facilities that we have in this area. So kind of recapping, the recommended special use permit conditions, we would work with SHIMP Engineering to have the site development plan submitted for the proposed use. A lot of our standard conditions relative to screening certain elements of the use or uses. Site lighting would be directed downward and away from right of ways and only lighting up the areas that are needed. Noise on the property would be in compliance, we don't expect a whole lot of noise concerns. Long-term, the site would be maintained in a neat and orderly manner, that trash or debris wouldn't be in the parking lot or dumpster enclosure area. And that the last two main conditions that you all are familiar with, the site would be inspected by county and state staff for compliance. And you all always have the right to revoke something if there's lack of site compliance with these conditions. We are very happy and interested in presenting this request to you because we feel that this is the start of a very nice development for Fluvana County. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and I believe SHIMP Engineering would like to present their element information to you all now, if that's appropriate, Chairman Sheridan.
Are there any questions for Mr. Miles?
What was the one about the noise darkness to the shirt? Does that monitor stack or I've never seen it?
Yes, well, we're working in compliance with the Sheriff's Department, especially on weekends when we're not available, that they get a complaint. But our office does monitor through Mr. Miller and our staff, we monitor noise compliance.
Ms. Booker, the conditions, as you saw in more paraphrases of what's in the staff report?
Yes.
This is, that particular one is condition number four.
Yeah, and so it basically, Mrs. Booker, it says any noise shall comply with, any noise. So like, I don't know if people were out in the parking lot playing their stereo too loud in their car and someone complained at the car wash or something, but it's any noise shall comply with 15.1 of the Fluvana County.
Okay, that's what I was looking.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Alrighty, any other questions? Do we have someone from SHIMP here?
Good evening Chair and members of the board. My name is Kelsey Schlein, I'm a planner with SHIMP Engineering. And I'd like to share a little bit more information with you about the project this evening. Douglas, thank you so much for that excellent staff report and overview of the project. We really appreciate you doing such a thorough job in presenting the project to the board tonight. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Mr. Steve Peters, who is the property owner and applicant. This is, as Douglas said, this is a special use permit for a car wash and gas station in the R3 zoned master plan community known as Colonial Circle. And we're calling out the portion of the site there, the 2.9 six acre portion of the property that is subject to the special use permit request. Next slide, please. So we have the gas pumps shown along the front of the site and the car wash tunnel proposed on the site as well. We've called these uses out as uses subject to special use permit, just to bring attention to the fact that a neighborhood convenience store would be allowed by right on the site, as Douglas mentioned in his staff report. And additionally, one item that we aren't showing on this conceptual site plan, but I think will really help to contribute to the aesthetic of the site, is the robust landscaping buffer along Route 53 and at the intersection of the New Roundabout there. Fluvana County has a very robust landscaping ordinance, but it creates a very nice and cohesive looking development. So that's just one item not noted on the site plan, on the concept plan, but will be included on the site plan as we move forward. Next slide, please. Just going over the zoning map, Douglas kind of already shared this. So but kind of here at a zoomed out scale, you can see how this R3 zoned master plan community at the intersection of Route 53 and Lake Monticello Road can really serve as an anchor point to the rest of Lake Monticello Road as that growth area continues to develop out with businesses and additional residents along that corridor. Next slide, please. Just showing the comprehensive plan, this property is located within a designated growth area in Fluvana County. Next slide, please. So this proposed development is a key component of the entire Colonial Circle development, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors back in 2019. So you can see there with the red outline how the proposal is integrated into a much larger site context and will really be a critical element and component of a much larger cohesive development. It'll really complement the future residences and businesses of that development as well as serve existing residents of Fluvana County. To provide some additional background info about the property, and some of you were on the board back in 2015 when the front 15 acres of the property was originally rezoned from A1 agricultural to B1 business. So back in 2015, the car wash and gas station was actually a byright use throughout the rezoning of the property to an R3 master plan community. Mr. Peters had been very open about his intent to file a special use permit at some point in the future and it was always imagined as part of the larger master plan. And so here we are, a few years later, and bringing forth to you the special use permit request. Next slide, please. Just kind of revisiting the site plan here. And I want to just take a moment to kind of bring attention to a few of the concerns, or just one main concern that was brought up at the community meeting, just future pedestrian connectivity and how people will navigate the site. I will say that this property is integrated into a master planned community that's connected via sidewalks. And so as far as navigation throughout the development itself, there's definitely an opportunity there for pedestrian connectivity. And additionally, with the construction of the Roundabout and the specs that VDOT built the Roundabout to, they did a pretty good job at incorporating some pedestrian facilities within that Roundabout and have imagined how that Roundabout will contribute to a broader pedestrian network in the future when Colonial Circle is built out. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to present to you tonight, as has been stated multiple times, this property is part of a larger development, which is currently going through the site planning review and approval process. And with that, we have done a few redesigns just to the internal road network on the property. And actually, one of those redesigns has resulted in the removal of one of the full access entrances that we have shown on the concept plan. I wanted to bring that up tonight because it was a comment received for the what is now byright R3 master plan site plan that VDOT kind of posed just as a consideration to consider removing some entrances to the site and kind of thinking about how more of the traffic generated could utilize the traffic circle. So I just wanted to update the board tonight that in our revised site plan, that entrance has actually been proposed to be removed. And the restricted right in, right out entrance, which is proposed to remain, does meet VDOT Access Management spacing standards. Next slide, please. And that's all that I have for you tonight, I'm available for questions if you all have any follow-ups, happy to answer them. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Are there any questions from Ms. Land? Thank you very much for coming in and speaking to us tonight, Ms. Land, we do appreciate it, ma'am.
Certainly.
Alrighty, folks, hearing no questions, is there any other comments or things that we'd like to make? Alright, we'll now go forward with the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is there anyone wish to speak at this time? Star six will unmute you if you're on the phone. Has anyone raised their hand, Ms. Harris? Okay. Seeing or hearing no one wanting to comment, I will now close the public hearing. Alright, are there any questions or comments from the board?
I think it's an exciting project. Good to see it happening.
Yes.
Yes, sir, do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Supervisors approve SUP 20, hole 03, a request to permit both car wash and gas station uses with respect to 60.9 plus minus acres of tax map, eight section A parcel, A114, A14A, subject to the six conditions listed in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. O'Brien and seconded by Ms. Booker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. B, ZMP 2101, Christian and Associates Excavating, Mr. Miles?
Yes, sir, Chairman Sheridan, it's alright, we would like to consider the two next requests, ZMP 2101 and SUP 2101 as companion cases for this public hearing. They kind of go hand in hand with the rezoning and then the SUP for the contractor.
Fred, is that okay, or do we need to keep them separate?
I think that's alright, as long as the applicant has no objection to it.
Does the applicant have an objection?
No objection, thank you very much.
Okay, then I will read C, SUP 2101, Christian Associates Excavating. Go ahead, Mr. Miles.
Yes, sir, Chairman Sheridan, this is just down the road from where we were just at at Colonial Circle. It's just a little further down on Lake Monticello Road. It's across from what I call Fluvana Self-Storage Two, the new location on the north side of Lake Monticello Road. This is Mr. Christian's property that he's owned for quite some time. And he is a current excavating company that has been based in Fluvana for quite a while and has had his business in Albemarle and other areas and would like to return it back to the county. So this request first would be a request to rezone it from A1 to general business B1 with proffering out certain uses that are higher uses on the property to in order to get his request as an SUP for the contractor storage yard. This is a little closer version of it, the proposed use would be up towards the front center of the property. And then future areas in the back, he would work with SHIMP Engineering to possibly do additional buildings at some point for other users on the property if they chose to do so. So as I stated, this is a conditional rezoning and some of the higher uses that he has proffered out and working with the planning department has been automobile repair service, RV sales, fast food restaurants, neighborhood retail C-store, like you just saw down the street, some other uses such as dance halls, commercial kennels and other similar land uses that we just didn't feel were suitable in this neighborhood commercial use quarter. And the applicant has agreed and submitted those proffers as part of his request. And this is actually, if I can move to the SUP portion of the request, what he's proposing to do on this property, if the rezoning occurs from A1 to B1, would be to construct his contractor shop and storage yard. And Ms. Shawn will actually go over some of the information relative to how he would screen. And Ms. Ms. Shawn will actually go over some of the information relative to how he would screen and landscape that area. But again, our 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 request conditions are very similar to what you just saw before, if not exactly the same that we recommend in all our SUP requests. So really, at this point, the two requests are to get the contractor shop and storage yard. And up to this point, we've had no concerns whatsoever. I will let you know that the Planning Commission level, there was a concern from Mr. Largo Messino relative to he felt that this was too high of a use in this quarter. And the other Planning Commission members did not agree in that that approach. Just to be aware, Mr. Christian has actually had a lot of his equipment and materials in this quarter at another commercial location. So we worked with VDOT. One other important point to to make on this, Mr. Christian actually years ago obtained his VDOT land use entrance permit and created a commercial entrance already. So he's already established his location for where he would bring his equipment in and out. And the Planning Commission and planning staff feel that this is an appropriate use for for the site and it's highly conditioned. And at this point, I could be willing to answer any questions or if you would like to hear from Champ Engineering again, they can provide some more screening and other type of information that this request entails. So thank you, Chairman Sheridan.
Are there any questions for Mr. Miles?
What amount of traffic does it expect?
He actually has just a few trucks and trailers that he hauls his backhoes and other excavating equipment with. So that is all at this point in time and future. Parts of the property, there may be additional folks that might go in there as well. More office space and office type uses that would be there that that would be very limited traffic during the peak periods.
How much property is that?
This is 14, I believe. I think it's 14 acres there totaling.
Mr. Weaver, do you have questions?
Yeah.
Yes, so that's another important point. Mr. Christian, actually, you you all just approved the.
Yeah, they just came to us a while back.
A while back. That was that's phase four of Village Oaks. And that was approved back in October of 2020. Mr. Christian actually was ready to come forward with his request in the end of the summer and he worked with Southern Development to wait until this the residential component was done. Mr. Christian actually does reside about two parcels behind here, back on Bluff Lane. So he feels that this is cannot get any closer to his own home. He wants to protect and maintain his business interests. So he's trying to bring it right in basically his own backyard. He has worked, Mr. Christian, with the Southern Development folks and then also the the person that owns a parcel in between his house and this request to do additional screening and buffering landscaping.
Any buildings on?
It's currently vacant, ma'am.
I mean, he's not putting any buildings. He's just putting equipment.
He's going to construct a building.
He's got an office building.
Yes, Ms. Ms. Slime will show you that. Yes, it's going to be located in the kind of front right center of the property. This will be his office warehouse for himself. And he's been renting property, leasing property for quite some time. So this allows him to become a property owner and business owner there.
Alrighty. Ms. Slime? Ms. Ms. Slime, did you have a thing, something for us?
Yes, please. Sorry, sorry for the delay. I was waiting waiting for the slides to come up. But yes, if I could. So again, I'm Kelsey Schlein on with Champ Engineering. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mr. Timothy Christian, who's the owner of this property and has been for a number of years. As Douglas said, his his residence is nearby and he bought this property years ago with the intention of one day being able to utilize it to serve his local excavation company. Mr. Christian has owned and operated Christian Associates Excavating in central Virginia for over 20 years and he hopes to utilize this property so that he may service, repair and store his excavation equipment while it is not out on the job site. So the slide here shows the extensive site improvements that are proposed at this time. There's a storage building proposed so that the equipment can be stored and repaired undercover. And then there's a generous gravel parking area for additional onsite storage of equipment. What you're looking at here is concentrated into approximately five acres of the total 14 acre property. Next slide, please. Just the the slot, the site and context. Next slide. Looking at the street view here, Douglas had mentioned the approved VDOT entrance. So looking at the towards Crofton Plaza in the upper image here, you can see the entrance location kind of on the left side of that image there. And then this, the view below is just from the opposite edge of the property looking towards the Cherokee section of Lake Monticello. Next slide. So the property is located within the Lake Monticello Community Planning Area, which is the designated growth area. This, the rezoning request with proffered restrictions on more intense commercial uses is directly consistent with recommendations called for in the the master plan as this zoning will contribute to a more mixed use community along the Lake Monticello corridor. The contractor's storage yard is allowed by special use permit in the B1 district. As a use allowed by special use permit, this use is typically a bit more intense than those allowed by right. However, we believe the conditions proposed with the special use permit sufficiently mitigate potential adverse impacts from this use. We feel this is the right use for this property at this point in time. The property is in close proximity to the owner's personal residence, allowing him to easily access his equipment and limit travel time accessing his equipment. Additionally, having this contractor's storage yard in this location is advantageous as the growth area continues to develop because many of existing and potential future job sites are nearby, limiting the amount of miles traveled. At some point in time, the contractor's storage yard may not be the highest and best use on this property. And at that point, the property may revert to a by right commercial user on the property if the if the business zoning designation is approved by the board tonight. However, at this point in time, this user on the property will directly support current and future development activities, especially those in the growth area. And it, more importantly, perhaps it will allow for a local business to have a designated place for storage, repair and service of excavation of equipment in Flavanna County. Next slide. This is the the zoning context. It's located adjacent to and our three zoned property directly across the street. I like that Flavana Self Storage 2 business zone property and a business convenience properties across the street as well. And then other than those surrounded by agriculturally zoned property. Next slide. The concept plan here, this is just showing in relation to the entirety of the four acres of the site, you can see that the proposed development is is limited to the front portion. However, we've also proposed a generous landscape buffer to help mitigate any impacts from any visual impacts from Lake Monticello corridor there. Next slide. There are, have removed by right uses in the commercial district by proffer. And so as as Douglas had said, these are uses that are considered to be a little more intense. The owner has voluntarily offered to proffer these out so that they may not be realized on the property unless a future board action is taken to allow them at some point in the future. Next slide. So although there is an approved commercial entrance on the property, there was some concern at the Planning Commission phase about the the potential for if if the entrance needed to be improved beyond what it is currently designed for. There's a few different levels of commercial entrances, low volume, and then a full access commercial entrance. And so this designation, this design here is just showing how if the entrance needed to be upgraded beyond what is currently on the property, which will be evaluated by VDOT at the site plan phase, that there there's sufficient frontage along the roadway there to accommodate a wider entrance and site distance and all the other elements that go into entrance citing and approval will be evaluated by VDOT at that site plan phase. Next slide. That's and that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Slime. Are there any questions?
Thank you so very much. I do love sitting alone now.
Alright, is there any other discussion before the board? Okay, now we'll open up the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is there anyone wishing to speak this time? Chairs?
Got my microphone back on. My fault. I imagine I'm loud enough. They can hear me. Now the microphone. Been doing good at that thing, too. Alright. Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Supervisors approve ZMP 2101, a request to amend the Flavanna County zoning map on 14 plus or minus acres of tax map nine, section A parcel 12A, to rezone the same from A1 agriculture general to B1 business general and subject to the proper stated March 19th, 2021.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made by Ms. Seeger, second by Mr. Weaver. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Man, I really love doing that when it's new business coming back or coming back or coming in. C, SUP 2101, Christian and Associates Excavating. Well, do we have to do a separate motion?
Yes.
Separate public. So we and we do have to have a separate public hearing?
Well, I understood that the public hearing was open for for both.
For both cases. So we just have to do a motion? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Supervisors approve SUP 2101, who request to construct the contractor's storage yard on tax map nine, section A parcel 12A, subject to the seven conditions in the staff report.
Do I have a second? Motion's made by Ms. Seeger and seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0.
Thank you all very much. And Chair, I had to practice not calling you Coach Sheridan tonight, but I think I.
You would not be the first one.
Did my best. Thank you all so much. Enjoy the rest of your evening and happy birthday.
D, SUP 2004 Cunningham Solar LLC, Mr. Miles?
Yes, good evening. This is the last of the public hearings tonight. And this is another exciting opportunity for the county in Sebeck. So this is the Cunningham Solar Facility that's proposed generally just past the roundabout as you're going South Boston, past the Sebeck substation and that location. And this is the overall property. Yes, as Eric's pointing out, the this is the area for the proposed solar facility. You'll see that Houghton Acres is just located behind there and quite buffered and screened by by that. This is an aerial view to show that the overall site location of where it's located on South Boston Road in relation to the substation just just to the south, yes, in that location there. And we do have Sun Tribe Solar that will present a little more detailed presentation, but I'll go over this request with you. It is a request for a five megawatt major utility or solar energy facility request to be located next to the substation. And in this, in evaluating this, we've looked at the comprehensive plan does have information in there relative to green infrastructure and energy efficiency where this clean energy approach would help support planning goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The applicant, Sun Tribe Solar Development, has been working with us on all of our school sites, all five school site locations and have a very good cooperative relationship with them on that. The preservation of the wetlands on the rear portion of the property that Mr. Joss will go over shortly. Also, some new concepts of wildlife quarter quarters would be integrated. So animals and will be able to traverse through the property without having their normal pattern of activity limited and the environmental site impacts and preservation of farmland surrounding the site is another thing that we felt worked out well in this request. Next slide. So these are some of the recommended conditions. I would like to go over, again, this is a special use permit. The proposed solar energy facility land use would be adjacent to the existing Sebeck Cunningham Substation that provides the electrical power and would be going back into the grid through that network. The second analysis that we look for is how is this use working amongst the other property owners and uses in this area? And the Cunningham Solar Project is following the main intent of the A1 district by requesting a land use that will require minimal traffic impact with mainly service visited visits once the site is constructed. The proposed land use will be habitat friendly in the local wildlife area, producing very little noise and will be properly screened from view. One other thing that I think Sun Tribe Solar will go over with you, we it's a very robust buffering and landscaping area that they're proposing for this site and also for all of us that are looking forward to whatever we can do to save our bees and butterflies. The solar pollinating meadows and fields that they utilize nowadays in solar energy facilities are wonderful because it works for them that they're not cutting grass and and working on maintaining vegetation. The solar meadow buffer actually grows just underneath the panel heights. And and that that allows for onsite retention of no offsite drainage. It soaks down into the permeates into the ground. And it's actually a very good win-win that's kind of going on in solar right now. But I'll let Mr. Joss kind of go over that a little more. So your recommended conditions, the special use permit would be for a five megawatt major utility use. We would not have any pile driving and site deliveries occurring on Sundays. That would be Monday through Saturday from sunrise to sunset. Construction traffic management plan condition, actually, Mr. Joss, myself, Mr. John Wilson and Scott Dunn from Timmons Group actually met right after the Planning Commission meeting and worked out the construction traffic management plan, which would have utilized the main roads coming from 15 and 53 and not having construction traffic going through South Boston Road in that vicinity of where the new tractor supply is located so that we would utilize main roads for construction and not interrupt our our residential and commercial operations on South Boston. The 50-foot setback from public right of ways is a condition, the 25-foot buffer for screening. Another thing we worked out with a lot of the fire chiefs during the TRC review is that there would be proper notification and public safety training with them. This is usually a new type of use for them to be able to understand how the inverters operate and other electrical type things on the property. And not only during construction, but actually after the site is operating, that they would be able to notify or contact someone with Sun Tribe Solar on a regular basis if they needed to gain access. So you know, even 10 years into the future, that same person or individual with Chief Mayo or whoever the chief is at the time can get ahold of that person at any time, day and night or the Sheriff's Department if needed. And then the last element is their decommissioning plan for solar energy removal. One other thing that we would point out, a lot of the conditions for construction may occur within the, you know, early part, if they ever need to go in and expand, or excuse me, to swap out condition the panels or anything like that. We also want to make sure that they're not operating on Sundays, so we built that in. So 10 years from now, if they need to swap out their panels from ones that tilt to whatever the new technology is, they can do that and still abide by the conditions that you. and still abide by the conditions that you all set um, for this request. And they were comfortable with that as well. So um, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We've really not had any concerns whatsoever. Um, there was some minor concern at the planning commission and um, neighborhood meeting stage with an adjacent property owner who I think has received information that the site will be properly screening from their house. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Mr. Bobby Joss would like to present his slides and go over a little more in detail.
I was going to say that this is in partnership with Central Virginia Electric Power.
Yes, sir, that, that's correct.
Which is hosted by Sun Tribe. And it says that the tendable low-cost electric service throughout Central Virginia service areas. It, it, it raises some lower technical issues that are not necessarily going on.
And the one out that Zion's is ten megawatts or how much, how many, how many watts?
Um, the one at Zion's, it was before I was here and I don't remember. That might have been a ten or fifteen megawatt.
This, I, I think I saw Mr. Gary Wood on here too, and he could potentially.
He would be able to answer that.
Yes. Yeah, that was a, that was kind of one of the standard ones that they were doing and um, in that timeframe, so. Um.
All right.
But yeah, this is more of a companion type one, you're going to eventually see some this summer and fall that we'll bring to you that are full utility scale um, greater than five megawatts.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Woods raising his hand, he could probably answer that question if you want.
Mr. Mr. Wood, could you help me out on that one?
Absolutely, uh, and I believe at least one of the Sun Tribe uh, folks, Danny Van Cleef was involved with the one up at uh, on Route fifteen, that was a five megawatt uh, installation, so it's a similar size. Um, different companies, but yeah, similar size.
That's, that's all I was looking for. All righty, are there any other questions? Okay, with the Sun Tribe representative, Mr. Joss? I'm gonna, I'm gonna mess it up. I'm not gonna try.
It's quite all right. Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, and uh, thank you, Mr. Miles, for the great introduction and review of our project. Um. Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Uh, thank you uh, for having us tonight and for your consideration of our Cunningham Solar Center project. Next slide, please.
Hold on, sorry, one second.
No problem. Um, my name is Bobby Joss. I work for Sun Tribe Development as project developer, uh, and tonight with me I have uh, Danny Van Cleef, our CEO, uh, Mike Stanton, our Vice President of Development, and Becca Stoner, who's the Development Engineer alongside me uh, on this project. Next slide, please. Um, for those of you who may not be familiar with Sun Tribe, uh, we're a commercial utility scale solar provider established and based right up the road in Charlottesville. Uh, we work with schools and local governments, uh, such as here in Flavanna, landowners and other local partners throughout the Commonwealth, provide sustainable solar solutions and advance their renewable energy goals. Um, many of us here at Sun Tribe, um, including uh, Mike with us here today, uh, live here in Flavanna and the ability to continue to partner with Flavanna to deliver uh, renewable energy projects such as this and um, the, the projects we've are currently and, and have constructed on your schools uh, is really a, a, a great honor for us. Uh, and especially, uh, we're especially excited about this uh, project as we have the opportunity to partner with a similarly minded uh, community-focused organization such as uh, CBEC. Uh, next slide, please. We're proposing uh, our project upon um, county parcel eighteen A forty-four, which is owned by Sebeck. Uh, the, the parcel is located off of Route six hundred and uh, like Mr. Miles uh, mentioned earlier, it's adjacent to a current substation owned by uh, CBEC. Uh, the parcel is approximately sixty-two acres, zoned A one and currently has uh, no use, it's a vacant property. Next slide. Here's just a general location of the project uh, in the area. What you see here are the watersheds uh, mapped out. Uh, the star in the kind of bottom center shows the relative location of the project. Next slide, please. This is a uh, an Ulta plat of the current, the site as it currently sits. As you can see, there are some abandoned structures. Um, you can see Route uh, six hundred to the left, some existing uh, power infrastructure which we will be connecting into for the facility and alongside the uh, that, yeah, there is the uh, power uh, substation and then there's an access road for uh, an neighboring uh, uh, landowner uh, to, to the south side of the parcel. Next slide, please. Uh, again, uh, as Mr. Miles indicated, we're proposing a five megawatt AC solar energy facility. This will be a fixed tilt facility, meaning the uh, the panels are uh, established in a a, at a tilt and uh, they, they stay there and capturing the sun at, at that angle at all times. Um. The project would require approximately twenty-seven acres of clearing uh, of, and would take up approximately thirty acres of the site uh, about uh, in less than fifty percent of, of the current parcel area. The site would be accessed from Route six hundred off a gravel drive which would be improved uh, for construction access and will produce enough energy to power approximately a thousand homes uh, over the course of a year. Uh. It uh, connects to existing distribution lines on the site, so no new electrical infrastructure uh, would need to be uh, constructed. Next slide, please. We have designed the project to avoid all sensitive environmental and historic resources. Um, much of the vegetation surrounding the project will uh, remain in place. Uh, and where uh, vegetation isn't sufficient to screen the project, uh, we will be establishing uh, an additional uh, a planted buffer. Uh, that buffer uh, would be twenty-five feet in width and utilize a double staggered road of evergreen trees planted every ten feet on center with a minimum planting height of four feet and we'd expect uh, those trees to reach eight feet within three years. Slide, please. Here's uh, the current layout of the site. Um, what you see here in blue and yellow are the panel areas. Uh, and then you can see where we're looking uh, to either preserve or uh, supplement the vegetation around the site to, to preserve uh, to, and mitigate any views of the project. Um, one area we have identified that we will be establishing additional buffer is along the uh, southern uh, portion, corner of the site uh, and as it runs kind of to the eastern portion of the site along the adjacent landowner, the, the Briants who indicated that uh, they'd like to see that additional buffering located there. Uh, next slide, please. As part of our development of the project, we've done a number of studies on the site uh, to quantify and ensure we're not impacting any sensitive stream or wetland, cultural, historical or wildlife resources. Uh, so we looked through um, state uh, and, and federal databases to identify if any threatened dangers or threatened or endangered or uh, National Historic Register eligible archaeological or cultural resource or uh, resources are located on or adjacent to the site and, and we didn't uh, identify any. Next slide, please. We believe this uh, community, this project has a number of uh, community benefits. Uh, it's in line with Flavanna's target industries. Uh, it will produce uh, or will use little or, or to no county resources, water and sewer schools, fire uh, rescue and police. And uh, because the, the project, the power will be can uh, utilized by Central Virginia Electric Cooperative uh, of which eighty-five percent of Flavanna County is served by. Um, this will allow uh, Sebeck to um, maintain and uh, and uh, keep competitive power rates uh, for those community members for well into the future. And then finally, the product, the project will utilize uh, less than fifty percent of the project site and this will help protect against uh, the overcrowding of land and also help present, uh, prevent, preserve it from uh, conventional and, and roadside development. Um. As uh, the, one of the benefits of solar is, you know, I don't know, as I've explained in a bit, after the lifespan of the facility, uh, it can be decommissioned and removed from the site and the site reconditioned back into uh, its current condition. Um, I'd like, I'd like to also uh, take this opportunity to to turn it over to uh, my common part, part at Sebeck, Andrew Cotter, to, to tell us a little bit about what this project um, means to Central Virginia Electric Cooperative uh, and, and how it fits within their plans.
Great, thank you very much. Um, thank you for giving me some time to speak. Uh, it sounds like the board uh, already is quite familiar with Central Virginia Electric Cooperative, but maybe there's some folks on the phone listening in or on the Zoom don't quite know who we are and why we're doing this. Uh, my name's Andrew Cotter, I'm the Power Portfolio Manager at Central Virginia Electric Cooperative and I'm also CBEC's Project Manager on our side for the Cunningham Solar Center. Um, so if folks don't know, CBC is a member own not-for-profit utility, we serve thirty-eight thousand members in Central Virginia, including uh, eighty-five percent of Flavanna County. Uh, we're a cooperative, just like your local dairy or produce co-op, except we do it for electricity. Um, as noted earlier, this project's going to be our third five megawatt system that we're going to be incorporating into our portfolio and overall, we just view this project as one with, you know, great benefits to our members. Um, both allows us to have a, a greener portfolio, but it's also allowing us secure, low-cost energy for the next twenty-five years, it's going to help keep our rates more affordable for all our membership. Um, I know, we're just really proud to be partnering with a local company who cares about this community in Sun Tribe and I think uh, you'll find that reflected in all the diligence, attention to detail that they provided, so overall, just want to say thank you for your time and, and let you guys know that we're very excited about this project.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, and the last slide, please. Um, just a little bit more about the construction operation and decommissioning of the project. Uh, we expect construction to uh, take approximately six months and uh, have utilized approximately twenty construction and construction management personnel on site per day. Um, construction, again, will be limited to the, the hours uh, Mr. Miles specified earlier. Um, during operation of the facility, uh, there's no uh, permanent onsite staff. Uh, operation of the facility will take place mostly remotely. Uh, and maintenance visits will, will be, uh, the only traffic to the site will be maintenance visits which occur about once or twice a month. And then finally, when the uh, lifespan of the project is completed, we will put together a deep, we will have a decommissioning plan put together that outlines how the project will be removed her, from the site and the site will be restored to uh, its current condition. Um, this will include removal of all of the uh, uh, photovoltaic equipment, including panels, the inverters, the racking, any concrete pads that are put down and cabling and the removal and recycling where possible of all uh, of those component and debris. And uh, I think there's one more slide, actually. Great, um, well, thank, thank you again to um, the Flavanna Board for your time this evening. Uh, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
Yes, sir. Uh, how long do these units usually are good for?
So uh, the panels are, uh, have a warranty of approximately thirty years. Um, however, similar to uh, uh, you know, a car, uh, an appliance, typically they uh, have um, a lifespan that, that goes uh, past that, so uh, you know, the, the panels can last for a, a significant amount of time.
Okay, and um, what's the uh, cost of a kilowatt on solar is compared to fossil fuels?
Uh, you know, I, I don't have that. Uh, Andrew, do you want to take this one?
Yes, sure, happy to. As mentioned before, I'm the uh, Power Supply Portfolio Manager here at Central Virginia. Um, so I'm the right man to answer that question. It's very competitive. Um, these are a very competitive uh, power pricing that we can get and more importantly, it's prices that we get to lock in for twenty-five years.
And what is that? What's, what's the kilowatt? Uh, cost of solar compared to fossil, what, what kilowatt cost?
Kind of hard to say. I guess uh, we could call it six cents or so a kilowatt hour, but there's a lot of caveats that can actually, you know.
But that's what I'm looking at. I know there's a lot of caveats, that's, that's.
There's a lot of caveats.
Yeah, yeah. Bring it up, so. I'm ready somewhat with solar energy, that's the reason I'm asking these questions.
There, there is one thing that's worth noting and then I'll, I think uh, Gary wants to speak, but uh, it's not just the cost of the power, but um, when we buy a lot of power, we have to pay transmission tolls. And by putting this power on our own grid, we get to sort of avoid the toll booth altogether. So um, a big portion of the cost of electricity is paying transmission tolls and having this on our own grid, um, we get to avoid that completely, so not only is it competitive power in itself, we also don't have to pay for transmission.
But you don't actually know the kilowatt cost for each one of those two fossil fuels and solar. You haven't worked that out yet.
Uh, I'll be glad to comment on that. Uh, and, and my concern in giving you an exact number is there's a lot of proprietary information in that um, that our partners uh, prefer that we not put out because it, it changes from site to site uh, and location to location. Uh, what I can say is that our projections will show that when this solar field comes on, our average power cost will go down slightly and it'll go down more in the future, the longer that we have this in place.
Right. Well, I had some solar energy and when the government sentenced us to that, it does make it competitive, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, solar energy is very competitive and we've got solar experts who can speak to that. Um, and it's becoming uh, competitive even uh, without some of the subsidies, but there, there's so many uh, elements to that, the transmission cost, the uh, value of uh, renewable energy certificates, the um, the, the, the stability of the uh, fuel supply cost versus other fuel, fuel supplies. There are a lot of things that go into an analysis of what that cost is, so it's hard to give you an exact number, particularly in public. But I can assure you, we've looked really close and have a really good idea of the exact number and that um, uh, we're happy with it. We're, we're very happy with this project and happy to be a partner and our members will be happy for years to come.
Ultimately, the customer pays for that, whatever that might be.
Yes.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, it looks like Mr. Van Cleef is raising his hand too. He's with, uh, he's with this.
He's with Sun Tribe. Mr. Van Cleef?
Uh, thank you. Um, I just also wanted to provide additional clarity based on this line of commentary, uh, as a CEO of Sun Tribe and the developer of the project that the comment was made, which was accurate about um, federal tax credits are available uh, for projects like these. Um, that is impossible for a not-for-profit to take advantage of monetizing a tax credit, um, given the lack of um, federal income tax liability. So um, the elegance of a third-party arrangement like this where uh, the, the project is owned by a third party and it is the, the energy that is being sold, not the equipment. Sun Tribe is able to fully monetize that tax credit, translate that into the most affordable version of solar power that Sebeck can purchase. Um, and that is um, a very, I think it's an important nuance that can be overlooked in terms of the structure of a power purchase agreement where a for-profit entity fully monetizes the tax credit, translates that into a power price for a nonprofit such as CBEC and that's the contract structure here.
Well, I never really got it correct. Answered, but I understand.
Anyone else? All righty, thank you all very much for coming out tonight. And we appreciate all the information that you've given us. All righty. Uh, hearing no other further questions from the board, I will now open the public hearing. Hearing no other further questions from the board, I will now open the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct to the board. Also, please state your name and address when you do speak. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Anybody raising their hand? All righty. Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. Are there any other further comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I move that the board supervisors approve S U P 20 colon 04, special use permit request to allow for a major utility solar energy facility on 62.4 plus or minus acres, known as Tax Map 18, Section A, Parcel 44, and subject to nine recommended conditions within the staff report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion made by Mr. O'Brien and seconded by Ms. Seager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next up is E, public hearing for temporary ordinance for the postponement of penalty and interest for the first half taxes of 2021. Mr. Dahl?
So again, we're just kind of going through the process that we've done before. The board has previously approved two other temporary ordinances for penalties and interest for the first half of 2020 and the second half of 2020. And this is just kind of in conjunction with that. Again, you know, due to the temporary ordinance is meant to ease the financial burden of residents and businesses from the pandemic. It's temporary nature. This applies only to the first half of 2021 taxes. Again, it extends the time at which penalty and interest will be imposed until June 30th, but not beyond. Again, it does not extend the time for payment of taxes beyond June 30th, it just suspends the penalties and interest. And since it's temporary nature, it's not intended to be set out in county code. This is just a sample ordinance, the temporary ordinance change. Again, we, the board has done this a couple other times. Just a couple of things I just want to add to the board, just speaking with the commissioner and the treasurer regarding this, and I certainly think it's a good thing for our citizens that the board is doing this. Just one thing I want to bring to the board, on the flip side of that, though, at the same time, is it's been brought to my attention, too, that you certainly get mortgage companies that are taking advantage of paying taxes until June 30th. You know, I was given an example of, you know, you have one mortgage company that's waiting to pay $3 million in taxes for properties at that point. And certainly, that's a, that's a financial business decision for them because they're keeping the, keeping the, earning interest on the earnings versus the county. So it's just one caveat to this that I just want to bring to the board's attention. You know, certainly, there's a benefit to some citizens, and I don't necessarily have the exact figures for how many mortgage companies are doing this versus how many citizens are taking advantage of it. But again, you know, just wanted to bring that point to the board's attention as well. And the commissioner and the treasurer, one thing that they, that they requested, and it doesn't have to be done this way, but they requested that if the board do this, that they approve it for both the first and second half taxes. After speaking with Mr. Payne earlier, and again, we've done it, we've done it kind of on a onesie-twosie basis previously, and it can be done that way. It just, it's a more administrative process on their behalf. But again, you know, however the board wants to move forward with this, it can be done either way, but I just want to bring those points to the board's attention.
Is there a greater need for this now, or has it dwindled, that need dwindled since we get into where we're going now?
Well, you know, the only thing I would say with this is, you know, we've mentioned this to the public, it's been brought forward to the public, and I think maybe, you know, we're getting to the point where, you know, people are coming, they're getting vaccinated. We are hopefully coming to a point where I, it's not 100% back to normal, but we're getting to a point where, you know, hopefully we're seeing some bit of the other side. Not 100%, but again, we're getting there. So again, I think if the board wants to do this again, there's certainly probably a need for community members that are impacted, you know, whether they've lost jobs or what have you.
People lose jobs.
They do, but they probably.
I'm not saying not, don't do it.
Yeah.
But I think it's good that you brought the issue up. I think we need to think about it, and how long is this going to continue? That's another issue there.
Sure. Again, we're extending, we're extending the penalties and interest period basically three weeks. So, you know, if you, I'll give you, I'll give you a quick example. Let's just say $3 million at 1% interest for a month. That's, I think it came out to, it was like $1,700 or something like that, I think, is what it was on a monthly basis. So just using, just using that example of, you know, if you have one mortgage company that's holding out $3 million, well, what is the county losing in interest on that? That's just a quick, kind of dirty, you know, on the cuff example.
Mr. Weaver, the, the issue you're bringing up is exactly what the staff is, is, is why the staff is presented as, as it is. So that this is a matter of grace or assistance, however you want to put it.
Right.
For people who are in economic straits through no fault of their own with the pandemic. But as the pandemic eases, there won't be any need for this to go on. So that's why the staff's recommending it, just be taking one, one period at a time. So it covers the June payment. We have not yet just extended it to the December payment.
I think that's right.
So how do you determine whether you should not extend it to December? Are you looking at job rate?
We'll see what, see what it is. You will make that decision.
Yeah.
We think it's premature to make that.
I know, I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, you could, you could look at, you know, you could look at what is, what is the unemployment rate of Fluvana? You can look at that. You could look at, okay, well, you know, requesting from the treasurer, you know, really, what is the amount, how many people are paying their taxes between the June 5th and the June 30th timeframe? Again, we've talked about this, we brought it forward. I think it's, it's reasonable that we would move forward with this. But again, I think if we, if we decide to do it in December, I think it would be good to have information from the treasurer regarding how many people are actually utilizing, how many citizens versus maybe mortgage companies.
In, Mr. Weaver, to me, one of the answers to your question would be this. What are our schools going to do? And we just don't know until next August what they're going to do. Are they going to have virtual days still? Or are they going to have some days where the?
I do, with some of the rest of them, that's five days a week.
I do, too, sir, but we don't, we don't know that. And I think that going once would probably be the best. I know it's a pain for them, but, you know, if we go back to school five days a week, then the parents aren't having to take off to stay home with kids.
But then you still, I have some parents that's going virtual, too, right?
Correct. Well, and are we going to offer that as an option? You know, we just don't know until next August gets to, gets here on that one.
Yeah. I think that whatever economic costs we're losing is certainly being made up by the funds that we're getting from the feds and state.
Oh, yes.
In spades, and that this is for those people that actually do need this. It is a, it is a blessing, you know, for companies that know how to maximize profits. Well, they just do what they always do.
Not they all.
That's what I'm saying. That's what they do. So, you know, if they can, if they can make $8,000 by doing that, then more power to them. But I think the more, the bigger, more important thing is that we're helping the people that really do need that help. There are still plenty of people that are suffering.
I think we can approve it this time, and we'll look at it.
And that's what I'm saying, doing it once.
And, and look at the statistics, and I will never know how many people actually need it. They needed it before we ever did it, I'm sure. In fact, from what I heard, they did. So where is that point? And so in six months, we should have a better answer.
Should have more knowledge to be able to answer.
Yes, sir. Excellent.
Any others? All righty. Hearing no other questions, I will now open up the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct to the board. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Ms. Harris, you see any hands raising? And you're back to see us one more time, let's see.
Yeah.
All righty. I will now close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
One more comment.
Oh, okay. Is there any other discussion?
I would say the other thing, too, is keep in mind that the, you know, and this is again, assuming a static position, once you move it three weeks, that benefit is a one-time benefit, doesn't move to the next three weeks, right? Because they've already captured that benefit at that point in time. So the only, the only increase in cost to the county or loss of revenue would be more people.
How many people did, right? Yeah, that's wrong. I understand that.
And I know that, I've talked to them before, and they say still, we have most people coming in by June, by the, whichever date it's supposed to be done, this regimen.
It is a habit, most people, and if they can't pay it, then it's not a habit enough. So we do help them. And I don't have any problem this time, but I certainly would want to look at December or when it.
Would not do it for the both of them.
Right.
You know what? Let me do one thing. This is the incorrect motion here. So let me go back to here. This is the correct motion.
People are going to now have to see to employees if they're going to get their unemployment with it, see within, I think the next month or six weeks, too. That's going to be some more accountability.
That one, I can't answer.
We just have more information to base our decision on. We go from start to end.
Correct, ma'am. Until we find out what schools are going to do, it's really an up and air question.
This is the correct motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That is the correct motion. Yes, I apologize.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board supervisors approve a temporary ordinance to provide for certain relief from penalty and interest for late payment of taxes for the first half of 2021.
Motion's made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Weaver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. And here we go, Ms. MacGyver.
Yeah.
Action Matters F, fiscal year 2022 operations budget and tax rates.
I have a little just budget brief, just to give, just the board a quick kind of overview, just so we understand and the public understands where this budget is. So again, the budget's based upon a total of 110,6979. It's, again, the real estate tax rate is being proposed currently is 88.4. The equalized tax rate is 86.5. Based upon that equalized tax rate, it's, it results in a tax increase of 2.19% for the average homeowner. And currently, our current tax rate for '21 is 92.5. No change in personal property, still 435. No change in business and public utility personal property, 290. No change in machinery and tools. So just, just as kind of a, an overview of, these are the categories that contain the biggest, the largest increases overall in the budget. And remember, the budget from '21, the amended budget from '21, it's a 30.9 million increase, so 38.7%. And certainly, that's a lot. When you look at the capital improvement plan of 25 million, that's the biggest piece of it. And again, that's, that's, that's being accomplished through debt issuance. And again, the debt service on that, on that debt issuance is $1.6 million a year, and the board had.
How many years?
That's, well.
Varies.
Well, it varies. I mean, it depends upon the different components, like, and I'll get more into some of the projects, you know, on a building, a new building, you're going to amortize that for 30 years, on some building improvements, maybe 20 years, on fire and rescue apparatus, 10 years.
Stretch them out, man.
Well, you, yeah, you're going to stretch them out based upon their useful life and what is, what is typical for that particular capital asset. But remember, the board had pledged to use fund balance for the $1.6 million for three fiscal years. And remember, within the, after that three fiscal year period, we have $1.6 million falling off in debt service.
Right.
What's that?
1.9. Because of the schools, remember, we get 200,000 in school debt service payments.
Yeah, we are getting a little bit more than that.
That's about 1.9, if that page was correct. We had.
In this budget, the schools are getting a 2.5 million increase over last year, with 1.9 of it, with 1.9 of that increase being offset by state and federal revenue, and basically, the county's piece of that, of the increases, is about $600,000. And that was really, the schools requested more, kind of as the county did, to give their staff.
I have the rest of that.
Well, the, well, the state and federal, like I said, they were, federal was about 600,000, and the state was the remaining piece out of that one. So about 1.3 by the state and about 600,000 by the feds. And again, the county piece was 600. When you look at other bits, also Department of Social Services over '21, they have about a 216,000 increase. That's for a new, new position and some other costs. But again, their total cost increases were offset by state and federal, state and federal revenue. So the county, there's no county contribution for that. Really, the last, besides the school, 600,000, the last five items are also, what is the county contribution? Sheriff's Office is, has about 157,000 increase. He's got two positions in there that take up, that account for, those two positions don't equal 157, but that's a significant portion of the 157. E911, if you remember, they have a 277,000 increase. A big part of that was there's a one-time cost to implement emergency medical dispatch, and they've got a plan for, because of the emergency medical dispatch, they have to increase staffing by four over two fiscal years. So there's two staff positions in the current fiscal year in this proposed budget. Under fire and rescue, there's a 93,000 increase with about half of it attributed to operations and the other half attributed to volunteer incentives for some tax, tax relief and some cancer policy. Thank you. Emergency management, a 272,000 increase. And again, that was to make one of our second ambulance crews go from a 12-hour truck to a 24/7 truck, seven days a week, 365. And then again, in matching with what was, and kind of how the schools were to providing a 5% staff, again, this provides for a 5% quota for county staff. And again, the expenditure cost of that's 505, but it's offset by about 170,000 from state and federal revenue. And then there are some, some offset from, from the county for health insurance increases. So those are the big, those items really account for the big 30.9 million. I mean, you have some smaller increases here and there, but that's the bulk of it. And again, within those, excuse me, within those numbers that I just provided to the board, the board here are new positions, whether they are part-time positions or full-time positions, or one position upgrade that are included in this budget. And then there are a couple positions that are not included. One of the positions, we are certainly going to probably have to take a look at as we start moving forward with some other big projects, and we talked about that previously, but that's not included in this budget right now until we really know how, how things kind of finalize.
Talked about using that out of contingency, right?
Correct. Yep.
When you're talking about real estate, I think you said what, 2.19% increase?
Correct.
Well, a lot of people will not understand that in a sense, that in some areas of the county, it's going to be considerable, nor they said maybe even up to 8 or 10% increase. And then some people will be less than 2.19%.
Yeah, overall, I mean, if you're looking, if you're looking at reassessments, different people's reassessment values have changed, depending on where you are in the county.
Wasn't the 2.1% increase the increase over the?
Equalized rate.
The equalized rate. So it's not, it's not the assess, it's not what the average assessment rate was.
Yeah, that's, it's an increase over there.
Over the previous years.
Yes.
At an equalized basis over the previous years.
But they equate that a lot of activity with it.
Yeah, I think, and maybe, maybe, maybe I wasn't being redundant, but I think the equal, the, the equalized rate was actually higher, right? I mean, the equalized rate was like 4% or 5%. Some people got eight, and some people got less.
Correct.
Yeah, that's right.
But the 2.1 is the increase in the budget.
Yeah.
And see, I can tell you, the last time it went through, like last time, when he talked about the value of used vehi- And see, I can tell you, the last time it went through, like last time when he talked about the value of used vehicles, he brought up the value of my truck going up three thousand dollars. Our, my assessment went up somewhere between twelve and fifteen percent.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That, that, that jumped a lot from two years ago. No, sir. No, sir, because his did the same thing. It just, it was just that corner of the county.
Well, it is welcome.
A lot of them went up a lot.
Keep in mind that for many people, their properties are still hovering below.
Where they were.
Yeah.
So, so they're just maybe potentially getting out from being underwater.
Yeah.
I just like seeing it when I drive around and there's for sale sign goes up in front of a property. It doesn't take very long for there's something, say contract, contract pending. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Exactly.
And, and then the final piece is just a quick summary of the twenty-five million, um, capital projects. Again, um, there is a sixteen point five million for county, new county admin building, new department of social services building. Renovate old county admin building to connect it with the courts and then renovate old DSS building, uh, for various uses. And these numbers were provided from Crabtree and Roarball when they did the space utilization. And, you know, I, I, I'm hoping that, that, that these numbers are still in the ballpark. They might be low right now, but we're gonna have to see once we get into a more formal design. But again, so these, these items would be amortized over a thirty year period.
To repeat the, which is one, two, number three, renovating.
Run of it.
Concern about that.
I'm sorry, was I?
Concern about the, the renovating the old administrative building, selling it.
No, I, I, I think what, 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 one of the comments, what it was probably more geared towards is, is would we sell the, the current commissioner treasurer's building? And I think with where that building is and how it's on kind of the county's historic parcel, I don't necessarily see the county divesting itself of that particular parcel. We're more looking at the little small buildings, the, you know, the Commonwealth attorneys, you know, old storefronts. The, the, the Public Works Building, the old registrar's building.
We really have a couple seriously about stuff, yeah.
No, and there's been no formal discussion, but, but again, I don't think there would be a need for the county to, to continue, continue to, uh, have those buildings in. It's possible, yes. But, but again, it, it would, it would be hopeful that we could get some other type of businesses besides just county government taking up the village of, village of Palmyra.
About the administration building that's next to the new courthouse.
No.
I don't.
No, he was talking about treasures.
I think he's talking.
The old jail.
Yeah. Yeah.
The sheriff, the old sheriff's office underneath.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the, the, the admin building, we're not getting rid of the, we, there's no intent to get rid of the current admin building. That would be, that would be melded together with expanding the courts, because the courts is at, the courts building is that capacity. And, you know, you can move Commonwealth and Commonwealth attorney and his staff in there. You can move probation services in there. You can move court services in there to kind of have light functions all in one run space.
I just thought it was an opportunity to kind of address some of that.
Yep.
Right while we're talking about it.
Yep. Yep. Under the twenty year term, on that, what we kind of have, again, in, in the twenty-five million is one point two five million for Abrams Building, one and a half million for Carries Brook HVAC project. And then six hundred eighty-five thousand for Parks and Rec, PG Fieldlights. Under the ten year term, this, this is where I just want to make sure that we provide one hundred percent clarity on what is included in the two point nine seven one million. So in here, all of these items, um, minus the very bottom one, the heart monitor replacement, were included in the apparatus request. Now, I would, so, so one, the heart monitor replacement was not included in this original amount. I think it's critical that the heart monitor replacement, the funding for that be included in this amount, since we are going to be at, um, end of life for those.
Oh, well, I mean, one thing, if we talk about those things rather than adding.
Yep.
Um, when we talked about it originally, it talked about possibly doing less buses.
Yeah.
Ten, because we got three at the end of last year with the money left over and I think we gave them three more.
Yes, and, and.
So that would be sixteen in one year, which if that all ended life, that'd be a lot to replace at one point.
Yeah, well, and, and, and there's, there's some other things too, as we kind of get to the end, but, but again, so just as it stands right now, and like I said, I cer- I certainly think the Fire and Rescue Association have to chime in on this. So again, actually, these items in red total two million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand. So it's, there's about a ten thousand delta, um, for what that is. So that includes seven hundred and ten thousand for engine twenty for Fork Union. The ambulance for Palmyra, we have zero in there. And the reason that is, is because the board has already approved a hundred and ninety thousand in fund balance to do that. We've just been holding on to that, not moving forward with that right now. Um, it includes four hundred and eighty-four thousand for tanker ten, two hundred thousand for attack twenty, ninety-six thousand for response five, seventy-one thousand for car one. And then again, the board spoke about adding one point three million for tower, uh, to replace tower ladder fifty-three. And then again, if you add the one hundred thousand in there for heart monitor, yes, Mr. Sheridan.
Not to replace it.
Get a grant of some sort on that heart monitor?
Yes, so, so we, so currently we have a hundred thousand cash funded. If we have this additional hundred thousand, that's two hundred thousand, they have applied, um, for a grant that would match fifty fifty. So if we have two hundred thousand, get a grant for another two hundred thousand, so it's a four hundred thousand purchase.
That's the fly plate?
Um, Mr. Y, maybe you could speak on that a better.
Certainly. So what was the question?
Uh, uh, heart monitor grants.
Yeah, so the, the, the both Levana County Rescue and, uh, Lake Monticello Rescue have applied for RSAF grants. Rescue Squad Assistant Funds Grants. The grant grading meeting was last Wednesday, which is why I wasn't here at the last meeting. Um, and, uh, they were graded at the regional level. Now they're at the state and we won't know until end of June how the state, uh, granted them. I can say that they scored very well at the regional level.
So looks hopeful, huh?
So it's so hopeful. And historically, the state, uh, uh, granting RSAF granting agencies look favorably on these because it is an essential piece of equipment. So I'm cautiously optimistic, but that's the best I can say at this point. Thank you, sir. Yes.
The, the one, the one thing I just want to make sure and that we bring to the board's attention too, is, so if you remember the discussion previously regarding Lake Monticello equipment. So the, the, the discussion before was, we, the, the equipment needs to be in our name if we're taking out loans on this equipment. Um, so either we're not funding some of this equipment with, with debt funding or we're at the point where we need to transition to start the county owning the equipment that's purchased, even if it's for Lake Monticello. Um, and again, you know, that goes back to, if we're providing the funding for it, you know, we're, we're recognizing the asset values of, of that equipment. Um, and at the end, and, and of the day, we're on the hook for it. So if, 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 if we're gonna debt fund whatever equipment is here, and, and, and in this one, you know, you have the tower ladder. Um, in this proposed tower ladder in response five, you're looking at, you know, about one point four million dollars. So I think that's one thing that, you know, we would have to discuss with, um, uh, the F R I, but specifically Lake Monticello.
We all gonna share all this equipment, whether it's Montana or the county. I mean, we're all, we're all on the same team.
Correct. And we do, we, we, we really do share a lot of equipment and if, when people get called, they show up. Well, and then one thing I was going to add is we're not replacing ladder fifty-three. Tower ladder fifty-three. We're buying a new one. Remember they talked about in the, oh.
Yes.
In the study, having the other in reserve.
Yes.
Having a used one in reserve for twenty years.
That's correct.
So it's not to replace.
You're correct.
But to enhance.
Yep. So that, that's one thing that, you know, just as we're, as we're kind of getting into this, where we're taking out debt for all this thing, you know, we just need to make sure that that's abundantly clear upfront, that we start moving in that direction. If, if, if county, if the county is taking out debt, it needs to be an asset of county. So.
Makes sense.
Um, so that's that. Um, and then again, on remaining ten year term stuff, buses, um, you know, a little over a million dollars in buses. Uh, public works, equipment shed, public work utilities, major equipment under the seven year term. Uh, sheriff's vehicles and then county vehicles, um, mostly some county vehicles and county trucks, the public utilities, um, public utilities vehicles. Usually are, are, are hand me down vehicles from everyone else after they've used them twice. And then items that are not included, that were not funded in this debt piece. One, uh, the sheriff's office has requested the secure Sally Port. And then you've got these three items underneath here for the schools, seventy-five for school safety vestibules. They originally requested one twenty-five, but they're getting a grant, so they really only need seventy-five. Um, middle school annex floors and bleachers and then school transport vehicles. Now, there may be a way, once if, once the county takes out this big, big bowl, so let's just say, say we put, oh, I'm sorry, say we put a million dollars for buses, well, maybe the schools say, you know what, we don't need ten buses, we need nine buses. But maybe that extra hundred thousand goes to replacing school transport vehicles or, or maybe their Abrams project or the central HVAC project. They can hone in their costs and, and, and estimates a little bit more, which would provide, if we're taking out the funding for it, it could be provided to, to stretch a little further.
Maybe the heading should really read potential substitute item.
That, that's, that's a good one. Yeah. Yep. Or.
Yeah.
So.
So you, you, use, use as needed.
Yep. So, yeah, so, so again, I just wanted to go over just where the budget stands right now for the public. You know, it's, it's, it's a big increase, but, you know, we have justification why it is. Um, and like I said, just have questions and then said, Ms. MacGyver, um, from the actual, um, document, she's prepared all the resolutions. Um, and all the motions, uh, to go forward for this. So if you have questions about what's on there, she could certainly help. And, and again, this is her, uh, this is her last board meeting.
Once on.
Yeah.
First one, but.
I couldn't leave without talking to y'all one more time and filling up the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Um, I gave everybody a copy of the budget as was presented last week for the public hearing and the budget balance sheets. If there's any questions on any of that, I'd be happy to address anything I can. If there's any other questions regarding, um, the budget.
Or Mr. Weaver will get the AP report. If we wanna, if we want to give her one last round, we can ask her some, uh, AP questions, so.
You're gonna go easy on me tonight?
Oh, don't hold back.
So again, that's, that's budget related. Um, so, and you know, we could jump into the budget. I don't know if there's changes, if we're where we're at.
Hopefully you know if there's change.
Well, well.
Did anyone have?
Good.
Did anybody have anything that they wanted to bring up? And I've been as good on this one as we've ever been. Um, I'm talking about in agreement. Uh, alrighty.
Yeah, and just, um, and just, uh.
And there are two motions. There's one to adopt the budget and then one for the C I P.
Yeah, so here's, here's the resolution to adopt the budget. And again, it has that hundred and ten million. Ms. MacGyver listed out all the county tax rates. And listed out, listed out the breakdown of revenues and expenditures and what have you, so, um.
We have to read that whole thing?
No.
Okay.
No, you just have to read that.
Oh, I don't have to read anything. I just get to sit here and talk. Oh, alrighty. Is there anybody, would, anyone would like to make this motion?
I, I think it's an excellent budget and I'm happy to make it, Mr. Chair. I move the board supervisors adopt the resolution entitled the resolution to adopt the FY twenty-two operations budget, set the tax rates and the appropriate funds.
Do I have a second? We have a motion made by Mr. O'Brien and seconded by Mrs. Booker. All in favor, say aye. That's a sweet sound. All again, all against? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. Next is G Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Two, Two Thousand Twenty Six Capital Improvements Plan. Ms. MacGyver.
Um, this is just to adopt the capital improvement, capital improvements plan as it has been presented. Uh, Mr. Dahl went over it in detail. Other than the capital reserve, um, funds, everything is being covered with debt service. And then there is four hundred thousand for both the schools and the county's capital reserve funds.
Yeah, and, 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 and just remember, you know, the year is fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-six, those are just planning years. But again, you know, we're, we're getting in a catch-up cycle. There's still gonna be things that are needed a little bit in out years. And, and, and we're still gonna have to maintain to, to replace our, our, our apparatus and our equipment and, and maintain our buildings, so.
There's still one.
We're still gonna have to maintain them.
And Mr. Weaver, you're gonna love this. There's still one office in the middle school that does not have air conditioning.
Is that right?
Yes, sir. I'm not gonna tell you who sits in that office.
You're saving money.
I am. I'm sweating to death, but I'm saving money.
Mr. Sheridan, I'll make people better. I grew up in Houston in a house with no air conditioner.
Hey, hey, we never had.
We all.
There, there was no bad sound to sit upstairs and listen to that rain hit that tin roof. And it's.
An old house, you know, that's. Daniel Boone's out there too, you know.
Just, alright, we've gone downhill. Okay. We got Mr. Payne over there laughing. Is there anyone would like to make this motion?
Again, Mr. Chair, I think this is a great step forward for the county. And I move that the board supervisors adopt the resolution entitled adoption of the FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six Capital Improvements Plan.
Do I have a second? Motion is made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mrs. Booker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Ms. MacGyver, you're not allowed to leave. Because if you got two five oh votes on something like this.
I say, I, I, I have to say, it's been two very good years. Both years I've worked on the budget, we've had five oh votes, so maybe I should go out while I'm ahead. Yes.
Yeah, and, and board, I would just really like to thank you for just, you know, we had to make some tough decisions and, but I think from a, from a community standpoint, a sta- a staff standpoint, this is a, you know, I think we took some big steps, but this is a really great budget for, for, for the community as a whole and, and staff, so thank you.
I had one gentleman call me up that was very concerned about the budget and he and I talked for about ten minutes. And by the time we talked for ten minutes, he started to, you know what, that's not bad. And then I saw him again yesterday at E W's as I was walking out and we stopped and talked and he goes, you know, that's really not a bad budget. Y'all able to do all the stuff you're getting done? It, it, it was just nice.
I've taken several inquiries.
Like that, yes, sir. Well, I believe the same, the same gentleman talked to both of us.
Some women called too.
I'm gonna leave that one alone, Mr. Weaver.
They're talking about the budget.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm telling you.
Yes, sir. That's my story and I'm sticking to it. Alrighty. Appointments H Board.
Just, just again, thank you to the staff.
Oh, absolutely. This, this was a group effort and, you know, thank goodness we got good news from Commissioner and the Treasurer's Office gotten everything taken care of, so.
Yeah, and like I said, we still, we still have some federal funding coming to our way. So once we hear more, we'll have, we'll be coming back to the board more about that. And I'm sure Ms. MacGyver is glad she's not here for federal funding. Yeah.
Special advisor. New title. Alrighty. H Board Commission and Committee Appointments, Ms. Solis.
And I'll be Ms. Solis right now.
She's looking at me like, no way.
Um, so again, we just have three, um, uh, three appointments. Uh, one is for the Jane River Water Authority, the Fluviana Citizen Representative, uh, Mr. Mark Dunning. Uh, I've worked with Mr. Dunning for quite some time. He's got a great background, so I, I can certainly vouch for him. And, and you know, there's good, good news with his continuity, um, for the Fluviana Partnership for Aging, uh, Ms. Joan Tally has put in for that, uh, appointment. And then for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board Community Member, uh, Ravendra Singh. Um, hopefully I didn't butcher, butcher the pronunciation, has put in for that position. And terms beginning, well, the terms beginning are up on the screen.
I'd like to make the motion. I think all the street people are very qualified for their, um, position. I'd like to make the motion. I think all the street people are very qualified for their, um, positions. So I move the board of supervisors approve the following board commission or committee appointments. James River Water Authority, Mark Dunning. His term to begin on April nineteenth, twenty twenty one to April eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Savannah Partnership of Aging, Joan Tally. April twenty, her beginning term is April twenty first, twenty twenty one through December thirty first, twenty twenty three. And Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Community Member, Mr. Singh. Uh, his term will begin on April twenty first, twenty twenty one and end on June thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
Alrighty, do I have a second? Motion's made by Ms. Eager and seconded by Mrs. Booker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. We have no presentation, so we'll now move forward with the consent agenda. A, minutes of April seventh, twenty twenty one, Ms. Solis. J, minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Uh, Ms. Solis. K, FY twenty one, animal friendly supplemental appropriation, Ms. McGyver. L, FY twenty one, third quarter voluntary contributions, Ms. McGyver. M, FY twenty one, facilities department insurance claim, twenty twelve Ford F two fifty VIN four zero eight seven, Ms. McGyver. And FY twenty one, facilities department insurance claim, two thousand fifteen GMC Savannah VIN number two four eight six, Ms. McGyver. O, FY twenty one, Sheriff Department Insurance Claim, two thousand nineteen Dodge Charger VIN number two five five eight, Ms. McGyver. P, Accounts Payable Report for March twenty twenty one, Ms. McGyver. Q, Fair Housing Month Proclamation, Mr. Dahl. Is there anything we want to pull?
Uh, we need a motion actually on P. And then I have a couple of questions.
Can we separate it like that?
Okay. Yeah, on P, that's the, uh.
Yes, sir, the count, the counts payable.
Question on that number, hundred and seventy four, Robert Farmer and Cox. Is that, uh, give me time to look at that one sentence.
Yep. Yeah.
Forty three thousand six hundred and six. Is that in a stabilized number or has that been going up pretty well?
No, that's it. Honestly, Robinson Farmer Cox, their their amounts have been pretty stable throughout the term. We're actually the RFP, because the the five year contract is up, the RFP is out right now for that. Um, we should be getting bids back, I want to say, within the next.
I think the next couple.
Yeah, next couple of weeks, so we'll be reviewing bids at that point, looking at, um, who's who's appropriate, uh, who the appropriate audit auditing firm is and you know, certainly costs will be included in that, but you know, they have always been, uh, very reasonable in their audit services. No, it's been more than that. I mean, I mean, I've been here. Yeah. Oh, it's been here since I've been here. It's been long.
I was gonna say, it's been here since we've been here.
They haven't.
They have.
Yes, yeah, they haven't had major increases.
Okay, uh, item four four three. Somebody can educate you here on this.
Dodson Glass and then.
That's the skater room, um.
Maybe Andy or Calvin, uh, so so skater, uh, so so skater equipment is it's the equipment that that is, um, it's the electronic equipment that oversees and monitors our Zion's Crossroads Water Project. Overseas water levels and all that stuff. So that equipment, uh, there is a room that was built to house all that equipment and because there's a lot of electronic equipment that monitors it. And so I'm not sure what the, what the Dodson Glasses, Calvin, you will. Fourth, four, three, Dodson Glass and Mirror for the skater room.
We had to replace the door and door jam into that room because, uh, eaten up by termites. Termite man never got there. Cause they come in every so often. They come in regularly. Yeah.
That bit, that door hadn't been there that long.
Uh.
You said it's Zion's Crossroads?
No, 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 this, the equipment's in the admin building.
Oh, okay, I got.
None of the equipments in, the equipments in the admin building. It's not up at any building in Zion's Crossroads. It's it's more.
I remember y'all talking about that, man, but I always thought it was gonna be down there.
Nope, nope.
Yes, sir.
And we had termite man every year.
Yes, sir.
Okay, five twenty eight. Five twenty eight, five twenty nine.
Oh, he getting you good. I'm loving life right here.
Yep.
He's torturing me on my last day.
Exactly.
For the, all the electrical charges?
I'm just commenting on, it's the towers.
Yep.
And Eric and I, we've discussed that before. Is there any hope for those towers in the future? Uh, have you seen anything, any light?
So, so I don't, I have not seen light in in the immediate future and and but I believe there's hope in the future, but yeah, that's that that's the electrical cost for those towers. And and again, with with big towers like that, when providers, when when there is a need and when they feel that they can make money in an area, they will come to those towers.
But again, the tower. Increases around those towers, nobody's gonna come.
Yes.
Wonder with the new technology, whether a technology.
Could expand the distance and bring in more.
Yeah.
That's Mr. O'Brien's wheelhouse.
Yes, I mean, I I I'm I'm sure there's a way, you know, to to expand wireless technology on on possibly the towers if they're at the right spot. But again, I'm not gonna claim to be an expert and now I'll, 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 I'll kind of re- relinquish that to Mr. O'Brien.
It's just gonna be a matter of when it increases, yep. Well, we might, we might not be to the future yet.
No, I mean.
I mean, you think if if we ever do improvements around fourteen with the water, then that's probably gonna lead to some population improvement there.
Yeah, again, I mean, I I think, as I've said before, they they were built to serve a purpose for our public safety system. We have an excellent public safety radio system that has great coverage throughout our county because of those towers. Um, and so we could have, we could have had someone else build them and lease them for a certain amount of time, but 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 we own them and it it was a, it was a decision to 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 offset the lease cost and 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 have a potential down the road. That's the VFW tower, we're we're leasing that one.
Yeah, we have to lease that.
Yep.
It's an asset, it'll be used someday.
Yep.
It it it's there when we need.
Yep.
And it was cheaper than leasing it.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Alrighty, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair. I'm going to the council payroll and payroll be ratified to March two thousand twenty one, two million five hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars fifty five cents. And I also move that items A through Q, we have to.
Do I have a second? Motion's made by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mrs. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Alrighty, folks, let's see unfinished business. Redistricting twenty twenty one update, Mr. Dahl.
So, yeah, let's, let's, uh, let's talk redistricting some more. Um, so, so you got my email board and, um, so again, you know, last time we met, you know, after some some guidance from the state and from from Mr. Payne, it was determined that, look, we need, we still need to redistrict for twenty twenty one. Uh, last Friday, we had a a meeting of the minds, uh, Mr. Mr. Payne was involved, uh, myself, Ms. Harris, uh, Mr. Overstreet, and we talked with the registrar was present, and then we also talked to uh, electoral board members. And again, it was determined that, yes, we do need to redistrict. And and again, per the Constitution of Virginia, it says we must uh, change our district boundaries every ten years, ending in one. So we must redistrict in twenty twenty one and and Mr. Payne, um, certainly agrees with that. Now, it doesn't say that you have to redistrict in April of twenty twenty one. It could be in November of twenty twenty one.
Is it one, the one real issue that that we did discuss that was different from what you, what the board heard before was that we got, the guidance we got indicated that you did not have to do it in anticipation of the of the election. It just had to be done before the thirty first of December.
That happens a little bit, I think.
Yeah, considerable.
Yeah.
Yeah, and 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 again, you know, it says, you know, you must use the most recent dice, uh, that the Sennial population figures. So again, if we were to redistrict right now by reading the actual inter- interpreting the actual intent of it, county attorney and 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 our position is we would have to use twenty ten data figures because that's the most recent. But again, because the the new code change that says you must back out, uh, prison population, so we would have to use twenty ten backing out the prison population. So the maps that we originally were provided to the board are 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 pretty much, they're on, they're not useful at this point because it just after doing a a further dig at this, we realize that you know, that's just not the way to go and.
Question is interpreting these, these, um, these statutes and constitutional provisions and the recommendation the staff has given you is is reflective of the most literal interpretation of the of these provisions.
So again, this.
Will, it will very likely require some tweaking next year.
Yeah, so again, the these, this this slide really shows you, um, code sections in the Constitution of Virginia that that kind of guides us for how we have to redistrict. And and again, there's really, there's really three options that we have. Again, you can redistrict prior to the June eighth filing date. Um, but again, we're gonna have to use the twenty ten census data backing out the prison's pop, prison population and go from there. You know, the one thing with this is we are kind of, we are kind of have our backs up against the wall if we're trying to do this before individuals are trying to file for the the November, well, to file to to run in certain districts and stuff. And and again, it, we would have to, you know, set, set the, uh, set the new, uh, redistricting maps. And and again, we we think that's a little bit of a rush to do at this point.
And it is, it's not absolutely, it literally in accordance with statutes and constitution.
Yeah.
That's why the staff has recommended what it has.
Yeah, so again, or number two, as as I provided, is let's wait for the twenty twenty, uh, um, twenty twenty one census data to come out in September, or if it comes out in October, or if it comes out in November and redistrict at that point using the census data. Now, the one thing that with this is, I'm probably, I feel very confident that we're not going to have that data in in a time sixty days in enough time prior to the November election where that would make any change. So again, if we don't get the twenty twenty one census data by September, November, as it says, we must redistrict in twenty twenty one. So if we don't get that census data in twenty twenty one, then we would have to fall back to using the twenty ten census data as looking at it from the motion, uh, you know, interpreting the Constitution of Virginia.
I'm gonna go way out on a limb and say we'll probably get some more guidance from Richmond by, if that were to occur, to say.
We, okay, don't, don't be real sure of this. What I told you last time would still goes, and that is a lot of this is really uncharted territory and the guidance we're getting from Richmond is, I won't say it's not helpful, but it's certainly not definitive.
Yeah, it's not definitive yet. Hopefully they'll be able to do something.
It's not, I don't think it's gonna be definitive then because this, the question is that how, how you integrate these statutes and and, uh, and and try to accommodate, uh, one to the other.
So, so as it stands right now, sta- uh, staff's recommendation, certainly, uh, referring and and with the county attorney and also speaking with the registrar and and the electoral board is to kind of stay pat right now, wait for the twenty twenty one census data to come out whenever that is in twenty twenty one. And worst case scenario, if it doesn't come out, then we we have to redistrict in twenty twenty one, but we're gonna use the twenty ten data and back out the prison population. But as Mr. Sheridan said, we're not the only ones dealing with this, with with this issue. It's, 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 you know, all across the Commonwealth, yeah, statewide, so.
And we did take into account in in the staff discussion, we did take into the account the positions of of other counties in in, uh, particularly, those are in close proximity.
Yeah, yeah, again, we 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 notified the board before that Armoral wasn't doing anything at this point. Goochlin was not doing anything, right, Ms. Harris?
I think those are the only ones we know clearly what they're doing. I haven't heard back from Louisa what they're doing, but I mean, this is a problem for every county in the Commonwealth. And particularly with of those that have prisons in their locality.
Yep, I was gonna say, Palatine, Goochlin and Palatine will be good to talk to. Buckingham, yes, sir.
Whether Virginia constitution can be amended with two thirds majority or I I'm asking a question, I don't know.
It's a, it's a multi-state, multi-year process. It has to be the, I don't remember the exact, the exact procedure, but it has to be adopted twice by the General Assembly and then ratified by the legislature.
Gotcha, so they couldn't.
It's not gonna happen.
They couldn't do it in a way that.
No, they can't do it.
Could the governor sign something? Possibly.
With this governor, who knows what he could do.
Well, you know. With this chairman, who knows what he's gonna say or do. Okay, we we all are stuck in that.
Quick answer to your question, let's flip and answer is no.
He 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 could not do anything?
You can't change the constitution.
Okay, we couldn't make an emergency order because of the lack of.
Who knows? But I've never seen anything like that and honestly, any basis for.
Well, I I would think that, you know, to Mr. Chairman's point, that the the data will be available, uh, the board will have the opportunity to redistrict in twenty twenty one. Uh, the, from my conversation with Mrs. Hobbs earlier today, uh, board members that are up for election and those that are elected will remain in seats for the term. Uh, and, uh, and that any district changes that do happen would take place on the following election, uh, which presumably would be the twenty twenty three election. So where we move to six or seven uh, districts at that point in time, um, that would give plenty of time for, uh, those seats to be open for.
So you're saying if we went to six or seven in November, whenever, whenever we get the data, then that wouldn't take, those wouldn't take effect until twenty twenty three elections?
Essentially, that's what I understood from Mrs. Hobbs. And basically, the, it's just saying you have to redistrict. It doesn't mean that you have to have to vote that.
And and I believe Ms. Hobbs is allowing to.
Ms. Hobbs, are you there, ma'am?
I am, hi. I guess I can turn on video.
Yep, there you are, we hear you now.
Okay, um, Tony's, um, relaying, or Supervisor O'Brien is relaying the conversation that I I had with him correctly. But I keep reading the code and um, going back to the same sentiment that Mr. Payne has expressed and that this is uncharted territory. Um, you can read it and it'll, it says that that the terms will be completed. But the redistricting is gonna happen after your election and your term will end. And it's uncharted territory, what happens? Cause your new terms wouldn't start, whoever's elected wouldn't start until January. It's all, it's somehow someone will give us, like, it's you all are right that we are, we are not alone. Um, and there are questions that need to be answered, um, but that we can't answer. Um, and the parts that are clear are that, to to my reading, are that we have to use the most recent data and we have to use it this year. Or we have to do it this year, but not necessarily before November. Um, so for me, my, my advice to Mr. O'Brien and this, the driving point is that if we were to redistrict soon, using twenty ten data, because it says the most. soon, using twenty ten data because it says the most recent data. But then we get twenty 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 data after we've done it, but we still get it this year, we'll have to do it all over again. Because the it says that we have to use the most recent data. Does that, are y'all following me?
Please, no, I'm not laughing at you. I'm laughing with you because it's either that or crap.
Yeah, so I I I, when I spoke with Mr. O'Brien before, I I was reading it that it seemed pretty clear that terms would be completed. But as I reread it, I'm uncertain because the new terms won't have started. Whoever's elected in the open positions won't have started their new terms. Y'all follow? Is that clear?
And and I'm sitting here in my mind going, if we use the twenty ten numbers and take prison out of mine and my district would cover about half of the county or a little bit more than.
Well, I mean, once we, whatever numbers we use, you can cut the cake in whatever shapes you need to cut them in to make them equal compact and all that kind of thing.
There will be nothing compact about my district.
But what seems to be clear is, one, it's uncharted territory. Two, every other jurisdiction's going through the same issues. Three, we've got to do it this year. Four, we have to use the most recent data. And if we anticipate that the most recent, the the data that will be most recent in twenty twenty one will come in in September, why why should we do it before if we would just have to do it all over again?
And and I think too, just out of the fairness of, and not fairness, but but again, if those that are wanting to run in a particular district, if you know what it is right now, well, it's it's kind of set in stone at this point versus, you know, if 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 we're trying to do this, changing districts up until, I don't know, like literally two, three weeks, four weeks from now, it just we're 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 getting really tight.
It does make any sense.
I can tell you that the Department of Elections has advised that they don't think it's required to do it. And they also think it would be really challenging because the primary will, you know, we're starting early voting for the primaries on on June eighth. They think that there's, you know, that starts Friday, the early voting does. Like just a few days from now. So they think that the there will be a lot of complications as district lines would change. So their advice is to wait.
This is going back to those tales that come with those law changes that nobody really knows about the forty five days beforehand. Did it just say like fourteen, seven?
Well, so again, it's 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 our recommendation to to hold and wait until we get the data. And then if we don't get it towards later on in the year, then we'll have to move forward. But again, hopefully there's some more solid guidance that comes up in in that.
If it comes up, if heaven forbid, we redistricted with twenty ten numbers and the new census data gets to us January fifth.
Well, then according to according to the constitution. You you can't redistrict, you have to redistrict in that year.
Right, that's what I have, that that but that's why I'm, that's what I'm saying.
That'd be probably considered a fundamental disaster of federal government.
I mean, there are scenarios that are anticipated in the code and I'm I'm not an attorney. So Mr. Payne could advise more, you know, intelligently intelligently than I can, but there is a section that's twenty four point two dash three oh seven that anticipates delays in local redistricting because the the new districts haven't received pre- preclearance from the Attorney General of the United States under the Voting Rights Act. That scenario sets out a whole process for it can't hap- it wasn't able to happen in time and here's here's what will here's what the plan will be. It just doesn't anticipate this scenario. But everybody else is gonna have to figure it out too.
Thank you so much for the work you do. Anyone else?
So we have three, that's just option one. We have three options.
Yeah.
We really only have one option.
Well, I mean, the board does really have, you know, a couple of options.
One sensible option.
I was gonna say. All right. So we're waiting for the twenty twenty one census data.
I'm assuming that's what the board wants to do.
Mr. Weaver. Yes, sir. That's what we're doing. Alrighty. Alrighty, is there any other unfinished business anyone want to bring up?
I don't know whether the Hayden Parish is unfinished or new. His his letter to us, what he read. But um, the other thing that I do wanna say is, do you all remember Herman Tolliver? Worked down
Yes, ma'am.
At the food.
I've helped him many times, Toots.
Yeah, he died So.
He was a character.
Yeah, he was. And he was, he volunteered there for years. And then he finally, Maca finally hired him. And he has been that food pantry. And it's just unfortunate.
They're hard to replace, aren't they?
And you, everybody, and always greeted you with a smile, that's for sure.
So he uh, passed, I don't know when his service will be. But uh, he's a part of the.
Okay. Fred, going back to her other question, would that fall under old or unfinished business? If we were to change a word in the statement we did back in
I I think that's new business.
Okay, and be under new, alright. Alright, is there any other unfinished business? Okay, hearing none, I will now ask, is there any new business?
New business, I think, is that we need to consider Hayden Parish's recommendation that we change our resolutions word. And you all remember the big discussion we had.
Absolutely.
And now that the decision was made on yesterday, should that read murdered? And change death to murder.
Chairman, I have a comment on that.
I was getting ready to ask.
I I don't recommend that. And the reason I don't is because this decision is not at all final. The the court hasn't entered a judgment yet. This is only the jury's verdict. And it is, and I can't tell you enough about the Minnesota law. This verdict didn't make any sense to me because he was charged with with three different ways of killing the man. I don't see how it can be convicted of all three of them.
Yeah, I don't think.
In Virginia, I know how it would happen. But
Probably ought to wait.
I don't think we need to go through what the jury was. I've heard all about Minnesota.
What I'm concerned, what I'm concerned about
We wanna change the word death.
I'm concerned about the very thing that the judge pointed out. Having elected officials potentially prejudice jurors in the event that it is entirely possible that they could have to consider this again after after these preliminary matters are done. I I think it's it's very questionable whether whether an elected official should be speaking out on it, on the the matter that's within the scope of the jurisdiction of the judiciary. And I'd hate to see somebody take the statements of a of a politician and use them to prejudice either side's case, whether the prosecution or the defense. And uh, I mean, you go back to Me Li in nineteen sixty eight, where the president announced that the Lieutenant Calley was guilty of murder. And there was a motion made to 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 terminate the prosecution based on the inevitable prejudice of the jury. Uh, I just don't think it's a good idea, as long as this is is not final. And it's not.
Then I, I'm not trying to prejudice anybody against anything.
It's your decision, but I'm advising you against.
Change in one word does not to see any, I don't see it.
Well, I think he's going back to the point that was made, wait until it's over before you do anything.
You know, I I think it's it's unlikely, but if it makes the board feel more comfortable to wait, I'm I'm fine with that. I do think that Mr. Parrish raises an excellent point, which is that, you know, how and what we say is important. And while, you know, in deference to the to the legal procedure and, you know, the fact that there can be appeals and so on, that that may be true. I think it's also important that when when the resolution is final, the board does speak about it. And that, and and again, I spoke passionately about this, you know, clarify that what we saw and now convicted was a murder and not just a death. So I don't mind tabling this, but I certainly think we should bring it back up when when it reaches that point.
When it's said, when it's said and done.
You know, I mean, so many appeals, I don't.
Three years.
It's possible, but you know, and 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 I still, you know, I I again, I think that I I commend Mr. Parrish on, you know, sort of holding the board accountable to 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 that, uh, to that idea, to what was the real idea, what we were trying to say, which is that the Fluvanna is committed to equity and justice. Um, and 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 equal treatment of all of its citizens and uh, you know, I commend him, you know, for for asking us to do that. I thought he was very, very thoughtful.
So what I'm hearing is to hold off and wait before we discuss this again, to let it finish.
Okay, to wait until when?
I can't answer that question.
It depends on what the, it depends on what happens.
What the judge says.
Well, the judge, the next step is for the judge to consider the consider sentencing and the judge will then enter judgment based on the jury's verdict.
Right.
Now, the the thing I don't know, because I don't know Minnesota law, I don't know which judgment, which verdict he would enter the judgment on. Because there's only one death involved, so you can't be guilty of three, three killings. At least that's that's my logic. So I, you know, it's possible that the judge, I think, as I recall, there was, there were, there was a murder, second degree murder, third degree murder and manslaughter. And it's possible that the judge might accept the verdict on manslaughter and not on murder. That's possible. It's also possible that he could reconsider the motion to to uh, grant a mistrial. That uh, I I doubt that he's gonna do that, but he could. And then there's the the issue of appeal, because if this were appealed and one or more of these verdicts were set aside, it could be set aside for new trial or or set aside for a final judgment. So it may be the judgment of the of the Minnesota Supreme Court. I don't know. But the process needs to follow through.
I hear you, but I don't totally, I mean, I don't agree, but I hear you, but I don't I don't agree. I think it's
Alright, so we will table this until a later date.
I think the news will tell you when it's the right time.
We all may be off the board by then, Ms. Booker.
I mean, this is just our resolution, our personal resolution.
Right, right now.
And it's so personal, it doesn't, I don't care what the judge do this, we do appeal. It's just one little word. And it just brings courage to it. And, you know, I was just looking at this resolution, reread it. And we have it here. I have it all in a nice little paper. But we don't have, I don't know where else we have it. Do we just do this because of the moment? Or do we believe in this? When we talk about community unity, as a board, we don't have very much going on with community unity, especially with this COVID. We didn't have Fluvanna, we don't have a Fluvanna Day, we didn't have, uh, we didn't have a Triad, we didn't have Old Farm Day. There aren't very many things that we do to bring our community together, to unit, to 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 unite, to um, diversify, to find out who we are, how we get along, because this world is just split to pieces. And this resolution right here that we, the community helped us put together is now just on a piece of paper. In my plastic thing that I keep very very close to me in my office. But it doesn't mean, to me, it doesn't mean very much to the, I'm not speaking for you all. I don't see the meaning.
I I I had asked when we first did this, that we, you know, put a black up on the on the county building here in recognition of that. I think it's it's an important resolution. It's different than many of the other resolutions that we've done. And I think that it, you know, is reflective of our community and the spirit of our community and recognizes the history. And, you know, in the same way that Mrs. Booker pushed hard to to have the Emancipation Amendment put in place. In some small way, to me, this is a very significant moment in which Fluvanna County participated in that history as well too. It's uh, it was just my opinion on that, but I think that we, you know, the world was riveted by what it saw to be a grave injustice to an individual. And Fluvanna spoke out on it. I think that's an important point. So I would certainly be in favor of doing that. I don't know if that requires a motion or not, but you know, in my opinion, putting a flag up and recognizing that is the the very least that we could do.
We could certainly put a flag.
Well, I mean, if But then my question becomes, and I'm not minimalizing anything, is we do a lot of resolutions that really do mean a lot. I mean, we did the resolution on the gentleman. Oh, gosh, help me with this thing. That worked with the uh, you.
Mr. Collins.
Mr. Collins, yes, thank you. I'm sorry. All the time, I just forgot his name. I mean, he he's one that's in the local community. And George Best, we did one for him. Nobody did more for this community.
I understand that. This resolution is far reaching to one person. This is a community thing. This is talking about community, everybody, toilet, wherever. And and um, I understand, um, Cog Sean and, yeah, we've done a lot of good resolutions. This is more community wise. It's it's deeper. And and I know it's probably isn't coming out right. I guess if you could see my mind and my heart, maybe you could relate to me because I live this. And it it we need to keep it, and if this is the time for us to be looking at how this world is functioning and how it's treating people, not only African Americans, brown people, Asians, Jews. And as much as we can keep ourselves in unity, because all of they were represented. Yesterday, I sat at a table in Williamsburg with a Japanese girl and a great friend of mine who's a Jew, and I'm an African American. Diversity, understanding and appreciation. And the more we can do things like that, the better people can understand each other. And Fluvanna needs
Well, I've talked about that. I do that on my bus every day when I get on my bus. Uh, I've got, I've got diversity all over the place on my school bus, most of us in the classroom.
No, I mean, I mean, of course, there's lots of important resolutions to a point. I do agree with Mrs. Booker. This is sort of stands apart, which I I I think it's important that we, you know, as Mrs. Booker said, just don't leave it somewhere else. And I don't know that we need a formal vote, but I certainly would encourage nod heads on it. Direct staff, of course.
Ms. Eager?
I can't hear you.
I think we need to take into consideration what Fred just shared with us.
That about changing the word.
Yes.
This is about just having a flag, we're not changing the word.
This is about just putting the existing resolution.
And where would you put the plaque?
You could take off one, you can take my picture down. I don't. You could take off one. You can take my picture down. I don't care. I'd rather have that up there. You know, I mean, it could just be right on the wall out there.
Tom, at the Morris Building?
We can put it, we can put it in the county admin.
County admin building. I'm saying county.
And I'm still waiting.
I'm pointing here thinking I'm in the county.
Yeah, I'm going, wait a second. We got our pictures up out there.
Waiting for the emancipation picture in the Morris Room. That's been many years.
Okay, okay. I have a question about this. If you, are you gonna put it in the plaque with which word?
We're not changing the word right now.
Oh.
It would be under, it would be death right now.
Yeah.
As of right now.
Yeah, we're, we're not changing the word. We're tabling that. Later on, if changes, then we'll change the word. It's fine. It's not, it's not big of a deal.
Ms. Eager, are you okay with doing that?
I'm okay with that, but you're gonna, you're probably gonna have to change the plaque.
Well, I hope so.
Yeah.
But that'll be fifty dollars.
You don't wanna wait.
Yeah, the, 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 the change is no problem. That's just sliding, sliding one piece of paper in and out.
We're just gonna do it on paper, on, on a piece, on a piece of wood. So are you okay with that, Ms. Eager?
Yes.
Okay, these two have already spoken up. Are you okay?
I don't know whether I'm or not. It seems like we're stoking the flames all the time.
No.
Get the flames going and, and get this thing.
Well, we've already gotten enough head nods.
Well, it keeps on going and why don't we just sit back and relax?
Can't sit back and relax.
Well, you can, but I can.
Well, go sit back and relax.
I am. I'm tired of it.
Just say no.
Well, I, I think there's, there's stoking the flames. That may be one way to look at it. There's also brushing things under the rug. Um, you know, last night, if you listen to whichever news channel you listen to, you might have saw.
I don't listen in it. I don't listen in use any, any, I don't listen to news anymore, because both sides get to where they.
Uh, as I said, you might have thought you lived in two different worlds, because it was bizarre.
I think we did.
Oh, you know, but I think as long as we don't look for good public and civil discourse and search and fight for what is the truth and state it as a truth, instead of just trying to make it sound politically correct, that, that we do it to serve.
If you've ever heard me speak before, I think those are the two worst words we have in our society today, politically correct. I would much rather go back to thirty years ago when it was right and wrong.
Yeah.
You know, I, you know, I'm sorry. I just, that's just the way I was brought up and I know it wasn't perfect, but.
Yeah.
Right and wrong.
Right and wrong.
I, I, I simply to Mr. Weaver's, uh, comment there, would simply just say that this is not, the intention is not to stoke any flames. It is to recognize the.
But it might be not be your intention, but, but it might very well do that. And I think that's something that we overlooked.
It depends on what media is broken this.
Well, that can be looked at in many different ways. That, that can be looked at many different ways.
Mr. Sheridan, what do you think?
What do I think? I, I really don't have a problem with doing that, but I once again go, where do we draw the line? How, how can we say, you know, do we end up with the wall covered with plaques? Because I think a lot of, I don't think there's more of an important resolution than we've done than when we recognized, uh, George. You could, you could put one word on that piece of paper and everybody that grew up in this county for the last fifty years, if you put George on it, knew exactly who you're talking about.
Can I suggest maybe that if our resolutions and all of them are very important, then where do we keep those resolutions? Do we have them in a special place? Do we take them over here to the?
I, I'm sure they're all stored digitally, digitally now. Well, I sign them all, so they gotta go somewhere.
And I'm talking about, I'm talking about.
Kelly can answer that or Caitlin.
Mrs. Lee's gonna answer.
They're all on file in the minutes. Yes. And then they're all also the originals or standard.
So it kept digitally?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are they, uh, do you have any of them in the historical society?
No.
I, not that I'm aware.
No, because the county, I mean, from, from, from my understanding, they're all records of, of the county, so they're kept within the county, not the store.
The originals, they have to be kept with the county and, and they, they also go to the library.
Do that, go to the locker.
They're county records, county records go to the library.
We do a digital display in front of the county building for their, their administration office, uh, with the different resolutions, just, you know, periodically scrolling.
Well, yeah, there's been a lot.
I know, I know. I'm saying to, to your point, but, but I, I do think this one stands out and I'm not.
Uh, uh, I'm not saying, you, you heard us talk, when we talked about it before, we got, we were all passionate about it. And, you know, what we all watched was, it was nothing, you can't say it was right. You just, you just, there's no explaining what he did. I mean, no matter of restraint, shouldn't happen that way.
Well, really the most, I mean, if, if, if the board wants any resolutions that are of meaning to the entire board, you know, probably the most appropriate place at this point is obviously in the, in, in the county admin building. And it, and it's either in the front entryway where you've got all the different boards, board pictures or in the Morris room.
I, I'd say in the front room so that anybody that comes in to somewhere, you know, somewhere should off to decide.
Timeline.
Well, and, and quite frankly, you know, maybe at some point if the board, board finds value, if, if there are resolutions that, that they feel are, are, are meaningful to the board, maybe there is a, a section of, of, I don't wanna call, I don't wanna call this resolution more important than the other one.
That's the point I'm kinda making.
But just a, a, a wall of significant resolutions. I mean, and, and again, that, that's, that's to say that others aren't significant and they are, but.
Because, because then you go into that thing of it, this means something to somebody and this means something to somebody else.
Yeah, well, yeah, we could put them in the, we could put it in the.
I want an Indian tribe up there to recognize them. I mean, where do they stand among all these other things? Look how they've been quote punished. So maybe we should look at that.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's just, anyway, it becomes, where do you draw the line and, and when does stuff?
And I, I, I don't disagree with that. I think it's just, this was a unique, particular moment of history. And yes, Mr. Weaver's right. You know, maybe one day we'll see a gross abuse of, you know, that, that, that captures the minds of, of most of the world that, that displays the, you know, terrible, um, you know, abuse that happened to Indians, uh, you know, maybe that will happen.
We talk about everything else.
That is, we're, 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 we're dealing with right now.
Uh, as a history.
I may have that a bit.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you can't underestimate the way we treat them.
No, absolutely not.
But you do have to go on and on. You could recognize them. You have to go on.
Learn, learn from your mistakes and move forward. Make the world a better place. Alrighty, any other new business? Okay, hearing none, I will now open the second round of public comments. Anyone wish to speak, address the board, please state your name and address. Keep your comments to five minutes on topic and directed to the board. Is there anyone wish to speak at this time, Ms. Harris? One once, go in twice. I will now close the second round of public comments and we are headed to closed session, Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Chair, I'm with the Fluvanna County Board of Supervisors, uh, entering to propose me pursuant to provisions of Section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven A six Investment Fund. Section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven A eight Legal Matters of the Code of Virginia nine two fifty as amended for the purpose of discussing investment of funds and legal matters.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. We are now in closed session.
Okay, so what?
Yes, sir. I'm not leaving you out. I am gonna do my best. You too, buddy. Hey. Oh, this time too? Oh dude, you got to send me an email, uh, send a message. That's immediately saying that you want me to send you. It's awesome, Mr. Weaver.
I noticed that.
Thanks, sir. Yep. I, I leave the news.
Said hello.
I will. I will.
Okay, the lights are blinking. That means they're cracking up thinking about it. Are we ready? Okay, Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Chair, I move to close meeting be adjourned in the Atlantic County Board of Supervisors convening again in open session. Be resolved, the board supervisors does hereby certify to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters. Lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under section two dot two dash three seven one, the code of routine, like fifty as amended. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion. In the motion by which. The closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
I'm sorry, went to sleep. Uh, Mr. Motion of Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Weaver, Ms. Eager. Ms. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien.
Aye.
Mr. Weaver. Chair votes aye, and we are now at a closed session. Is there any? Other business? Ms. Seeger. Do you have, is your microphone on?
I move the Board of Supervisors approve the resolution entitled. A resolution to transfer the Kent store Spartan fire truck to Cartersville Volunteer Fire Department. Transferring surplus property used by Kent store fire to Cartersville Volunteer Fire Department for the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Seeger, seconded by Mrs. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair.
Sorry, go ahead. I'm kidding. Aye.
The mo- the chair's sitting this one out. Motion passes three, one, one. We have a motion to adjourn?
And and just one thing before we, I'm assuming we want to cancel the meeting next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, meeting's canceled. Perfect.
We have a motion by Ms. Booker. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Weaver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We adjourn. The chair votes aye, motion passes four, one.
Such a good time on my birthday. I don't want to do that.
I don't want it to end.
I'm glad budget season's over.
Hey, it's mutual.